...acted would prevent parents from making very difficult philosophical choices or decisions under very trying circumstances. I do not wish what my wife and I experienced on anyone. So I do ask that you have the compassion for the wrenching decisions we had to make as a result. They were not easy, and they're not done without a great deal of contemplation and consultation with our medical providers. I suppose that if you believe healthy babies like our daughter simply die for no known cause regardless of the circumstances, then you can dismiss our concerns or issues with potential problematic vaccines. I do hope that after hearing of my wife and my wife and I went through, none of you would want to prevent us from receiving the philosophical exemptions that have made the decisions we had to make. Similar legislation to LD-606 in both states of Washington and Oregon failed to be enacted this current legislative session. I ask that you do the same in Maine. LD-471 takes a better approach. For our subsequent children, every entity that requests a vaccination records but participation enrollment understood our situation, accepted our vaccine regimen, and supported our philosophical decision to choose a different protocol. Our doctors supported those decisions and provided supporting documentation when needed, which is why I am neither for nor against LD-471. However, I hope that the documentation requirements will not be so onerous as to prevent the healthcare provider a reasonable documentation procedure. I'm not asking for the ban on vaccinations, and I am not even suggesting that parents follow the same protocol that we did in limited vaccinations. Those choices belong to parents. I do ask that you respect our decisions and try to understand the difficult issues we faced and believe me the pain lingers this day 28 years later. I do want to share, this picture was taken of my daughter a week before she died. I just want to give her note that she was a healthy, beautiful, lovely baby and didn't deserve this.
Thank you very much, Representative. Thank you for sharing.
Only a few questions. Thanks.
This is a question from Representative Stuckey.
Thank you, sir, for sharing, and I'm terribly sorry for what you've endured. My question has to do with 471. Having listened all day to the strength of the testimony of informed parents, I'm curious if you think that that bill has the potential of actually educating the medical community?
Well, I can only tell you that we had a very good relationship with our pediatrician. Obviously, we had a close relationship after what we went through. We had long discussions about our decisions, and I would hope that parents would have that sort of relationship and not need LD-471. We didn't have LD-471, but when we got our vaccination records for school or whatever, we asked for a letter from the doctor. He willingly gave it. It was just a letter saying, "We've had this discussion, they're exempting out, and we support that exemption." We did vaccinate on other measles and the other things, we just did not do the DPD. We felt that that was problematic for ourselves.
Understood. Understood. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative.
Thanks.
Are there any other legislative co-sponsors who should speak to this bill? Seeing none, you will now take testimony in favor of this bill. So please just come on up. And especially now that we're, I just want to emphasize, especially now that we're way beyond on time, it is very, if you're coming up to, so we've got Ms. Taylor will be one of the first people up. If you, the things you want to say have been said by individuals ahead of you, we'd appreciate it if you do say, "I agree with, I agree with what so-and-so said," and maybe here's some new information or what have you, but it is completely legitimate to come and say yes what she said. So that's completely legitimate. All right.
Hello, thank you, Senator Reiki. Representative Gattin, my name is Ginger Taylor-Frontwick. I'm the director of the Maine Coalition for Vaccine Choice and the author of LD-1076. There's no way I can address this bill in three minutes. So I will be in the hallways and know that when you see me, I'm here for you. I will be calling each of you for personal time to explain this bill to you and why it's necessary. Critics of this bill have said publicly that it's scare tactic and redundant, and if they believe that to be true, they know nothing about the Vaccine Injury Compensation Program or what the families behind me are going through or what my family is going through. So in one minute, I'm going to try to describe to you the actual vaccine autism discussion at the federal level where I usually work on these issues. If you take out this piece of paper, this is the U.S. Federal Vaccine Injury Table. When they instituted the Vaccine Injury Program, they put together a table of injuries to say, you know, this vaccine, this injury, usually in this timeframe. And this is the basics of what vaccine injury can be. At the first page, it says that an epiprtussis-containing vaccine causes an encephalopathy, which is the medical term for brain damage. Any measles-vax-containing vaccine causes encephalopathy as well. I want to read you the diagnostic criteria for that, for that brain damage in, and it's on, gosh, it's on the, it's basically in the middle. If you open two pages, the side is on the left. For children 18 months of age or older, an acute encephalopathy is one that persists for at least 24 hours and is characterized by at least two of the following. A significant change in mental status that is not medication-related, specifically a confusional state or delirium or psychosis. Number two, a significantly decreased level of consciousness, which is independent of seizure and cannot be attributed to the effects of medication. And three, a seizure associated with loss of consciousness. Then they describe decreased level of consciousness as any one of the three of the following. A significantly decreased level of consciousness is indicated by: one, decreased or absent response to environmental stimuli, responds if at all only to loud voice or painful stimuli; decreased or absent eye contact does not fix gaze upon family members or other individuals; or inconsistent or absent responses to external stimuli does not recognize familiar people or things. This is a description of a child having an autistic regression. What happens every day in this country is a child is vaccinated, has a neurological regression, exhibits these symptoms, goes into the office, the doctors have in touch to look at these symptoms, lots of eye contact, not responding to mommy, as autism. When mom says it started after the vaccines, they're told vaccines aren't associated with autism, get your kid to speech therapy. We are in the court system now, we have written papers on this, I have a book chapter on it, I'll be submitting them to you. You now know more about the actual vaccine autism discussion that's going on at the federal level than every doctor in this country. No doctors are given this, BAME does not provide it to doctors, they don't even know how to recognize vaccine injury. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
I've also provided a rundown of the corruption scandals and two of our books from our advisors that are on the Vaccine Court and injury cases that are coming out that you can read them.
All right, well, thank you. So let me ask you on this, I do think, well, this may be a conversation that lasts longer than three minutes. I do think as we hear kind of testimony on, a lot of this would be helpful if we have, for me anyway, even a more basic understanding of what this, what this office would do.
Okay.
So is it, is it basically connecting doctors and patients with resources and information that's already available on the federal level? Is that basically what it is?
No, so there is no, so what happens in this country is you have a vaccine injury and then you're on your own. You can call and report it to VAERS, which they take a report file, there's no response. You can file a vaccine injury claim, but most people have never heard of Vaccine Court. Matter of fact, the GAO and the Associated Press have both put out in the last six months a report saying that the program is failing, patients nationwide, families aren't being compensated, states are paying for injuries that the federal should. And when you find the Vaccine Injury Compensation Program, it's usually on accidents. They're supposed to be spending money to publicize it, and they're not. So we would publicize that in Maine so that, they don't give resources to families.
So, but that, so the, I guess, so is the Vaccine Injury Court, so that is a federal resource for people, but, so it's connecting people at least with that?
Yes, exactly. So if you had vaccine injury questions, you'd call this office. They would say, "Well, here are the options available to you." They would tell you about VAERS, they would tell you about VICEP, they would tell you about lawyers that can help you get through the VICEP because parents are treated like criminals, so they try to go through there. It's hard to find an attorney. I don't know of any attorneys in Maine, I heard there might be one, but usually this is, parents find this out networking. The reason I brought this bill really is because this is what I do and I'm exhausted, and there should be a federal, there should be a state agency doing this, and I'm just a mom that they hear, "Oh, Ginger, no," and I have a network. So there's a vast need for this from the community behind me that can't get support. Who's a doctor that will actually know what vaccine injury is, know what tests to run, know what the process is, will actually testify, testify for me in Vaccine Court? Colleague who had to leave.
Oh, she's here.
Oh, she left. You need to ask her questions. The process, everything's stacked against parents from beginning to end, and you're treated, you're treated badly. So we need, just even a few physicians in Maine that had the blessing of the state to say, "Yes, vaccine injury exists, you're allowed to talk about it, you're allowed to investigate it, we'll help you find labs that'll do the right test on the whole range of biomedical problems these kids have that are leading to it and causing it." But we don't have any of those resources, and it's very frustrating because a lot of the people who have been criticizing this bill in the press are the very reasons it's needed. The Maine Medical Association could do this, we don't need a bill for it. Maine CDC could do this, we don't need a bill for it. If AAP wanted it, it would already be done. And it's, we actually, part of the bill I wrote, because Maine Health lies in the press so much about vaccine safety, there's no accountability. So I tried to, you try to get false statements retracted. There's nowhere to go for that. There's nowhere, there's no complaint process against, complaint process in there at least that you can contact the state and say, "Well, this doctor's lying and saying this X, Y, Z research exists, it doesn't." There's just nothing. You just kind of walk off a cliff and there's, there's no resources for you.
So would you say that, now, I'm looking in the bill and under subsection three, there's a list of services that they provide, is, so is connecting people with the federal Vaccine Court, is that, was one of the primary functions? What are some other primary functions that this office would do?
Well, we need to educate doctors. I mean, you have, if you have a doctor, if you have a child with a vaccine injury or chusic, my kid's falling apart, and my story is like every other morning's story, it's tens of thousands of cases. You're vaccinated, your kid physically falls apart, and they neurologically are not intact anymore. And you take them in, and they, and if you say to a doctor, "I think this is a vaccine reaction," they honestly don't know where to start. So they need to start by, actually, first being, we have a Maine immunization program, hold on, let me say this.
Yeah.
The Maine Immunization Program has a program guide for physicians. It does not even include the Vaccine Injury Table or the Vaccine Injury Compensation Information. So for, tomorrow, they could add it to the website, that would be done.
So I see, so under three, subsection three, subsection H, educate healthcare providers about the process for handling vaccine injury claims that are brought against their practice.
Okay, now, that actually we need to change. I'll submit the changes that we're going to have back due because that was, there is, there's no way to make a claim against the doctor. They're protected. That was just a misunderstanding with the office that wrote it.
Okay.
It would be to, we do to educate practices on how to refer. If you're a doctor who, they walk in and say there's a vaccine injury and you don't know what to do, you at least need to know where to refer that patient.
So when you say educate doctors, so what you're really saying is, if I'm understanding, educate doctors about the process by which to connect patients with?
Yes.
With the?
With all the resources.
With the federal resources, with doing the VAERS reporting?
VAERS reporting.
The VAERS reporting, and those sorts of things that are, that exist on the federal level, but you would say are not being really implemented effectively on?
No, so VAERS, the question you asked, VAERS is actually the federal, 1986 Vaccine Injury Act legally mandates VAERS to, doctors report to VAERS. So it's federal law, if you see a vaccine injury, have to report it. Only something like 1% do. They just don't, because there's no penalties for any of this. There's no penalties for getting everything, or even everything wrong, and the child can die, and there's no penalties for anything. It's just a vast, unregulated, just hole that people fall into. So they could make sure, first of all, you would say, yes, you have to report to VAERS. If a doctor's own reports VAERS, you can call the state and have them, you have to go through the process. They can publicize the vaccine injury information, go in and say, "I have a vaccine injury." And I've done this with three pediatricians. What can, you know, walked in, I've handed them the table, I've given them the research, I've given them more than they can even digest, and they will, they will really, I had one to say, "I just don't know what to do with this." And I kind of feel bad for her, except that she's completely protected liability-wise from vaccine injury, but then she doesn't even have to know what vaccine injury, she's protected by this program, but doesn't have to know what the basic information is on injury from this program.
Representative Sanderson.
So while we were talking about VAERS earlier, and we've heard this a couple times from people who have testified, I actually went on, pulled up the site. In 2000, there's like 22,752 claims on there. 2014, 47,228 claims on there. It seems like very limited information. I mean, does it just get reported in and sit there?
Yeah, no, it's just, there's, there's supposed to be two, there's supposed to be two different databases, and actually, Mr. Kennedy touched on this. So the VAERS adverse events reporting system is supposed to be like an early warning sign. If you have a ton, you have the issue of vaccine, you have a ton of reports, you investigate it, it's supposed to go through investigative process to see if this is, you know, if they're, you know, it's supposed to keep track for safety purposes. It doesn't do anything with the patient or the, you know, nothing. If you report it, it stays. The database that?
Just real quickly, this was the one that they said less than 10% is reported.
Yeah, actually, we had a CDC, had a CDC probably 15 years ago who said he thought only 1% of reactions were reported. So there are some reported, it's, there's no penalties for not reporting, you know, there's a lot of doctors who just don't want to face vaccine injury. They want this program to be good, they want it to only help people, and anybody who opts out or anybody who says they got hurt are a problem. And they don't want to report, they don't want to, they don't still want to recognize it, it's an ugly thing, and they're hospitalized. So we can't even get them basic federal information. So we have to legally mandate it at this point. I'm kind of opposed to my own program because I don't like new government mandates. But this, this whole thing needs to be done to compensate for the fact that they have that liability protection at the federal level, and because they removed our right to go to court, there's no way to correct the system. If you, you know, I have Supreme Court lawyers that can't get any corrective measures done on bad information getting to doctors, or it's truly, it's an Alice in Wonderland type experience because of this Vaccine Act. What needs to happen is, and I put the repeal clause in there, actually, and for you, because this all can go away as soon as the 1986 Act is repealed, liability protections are installed, people have, you know, you'll go, "Well, gosh, I can't tell that, you know, parent that vaccines are safe because I can get sued for that, I have to give them the accurate information." Right now, doctors can believe whatever they want about vaccine safety. They can say whatever they want about vaccine safety, and there's no, like I said, it's just a vast, unregulated relationship once you fall into that. And the irony of this is, the push naturally is to start regulating the parents to get involved in this instead of regulating the doctors to know the basic vaccine information.
Okay, so just very quickly, these numbers in this list, the VAERS list, that's the frontline list. The other list that Mr. Kennedy was speaking of, that's the one nobody can see, right?
Yeah, that's the one, they moved offshore so that nobody could actually look into data. So that's what we should be studying for hard data on vaccine injury, we can't get access to it.
All right, thank you.
So hopefully this will be my last question.
Okay.
And I don't think we have a fiscal note on this yet, so we don't know how much this will cost. Is there, and it seems like this is one of the, this is arguably maybe one of the problems that we need, something like, that maybe we would need something like this to overcome. Maybe it's kind of a chicken or the egg problem, but I guess creating a new government office, I guess I'd like to see hard data on, you know, how many, how many people are being argued?
I would love to see that too. We've been fighting a 15-year battle.
Right.
When you hear vaccine injury is rare, there is no data on it. When you hear vaccine injury is one in a million, that's a made-up number. I mean, all this vaccine safety claims that they made on how rare vaccines are, there's no data, they just don't study it. And they can make these claims publicly. I wrote specifically in here, and I'll give you the Maine Health example, and I really would love for you to ask them about this. Cassandra Grantham with Maine Health went on MPBN in December 1st and said that there are several studies that compare fully vaccinated children to fully unvaccinated children, and find that there's no increase in autism rates in vaccinated children. And so we know vaccines are safe. This is probably one of the biggest lies that has been told. We've been trying to get that safety study done since 1981. There has been five years of congressional bills to force NIH to do that study. So it's the study, it's like, you know, the golden chalice that we're after for them just to compare our vaccine health, overall health outcomes and autism rates in these two populations to be able to say, "Look, participating in the vaccine program will result in a better outcome or a worse outcome." So we know, any kind of basic, it's a first study you do when you're looking at policy. They won't do it. So where do I go when health, when Maine Health can make these ridiculous, I mean, if you were a surgery center that was saying, "We have all this data on our surgery procedures, and there's no adverse outcomes from this," and you had families that were reporting their kids were getting sick and dying, there would be lawsuits from here to the moon. But we've got no, we came up through, this is just a big vacuum.
Let me ask, and I'm sure they'll be asking themselves this as they draft the fiscal note, do you have any idea how many staff people would take to staff?
Honestly, I have no idea.
Get one person to do the job or?
Nobody's, I think you need a doctor and probably a staff member, but I, this is, I sat down to write this because I was reading the Portland Press Herald and run up to these bills, and I thought, "Where's, where's the consumer protection? Who's taking care of us? Nobody's taking care of us now, and it's going to get worse." And they're going to add, you know, they're going to take away the rights, they're going to have more to the schedule, we're going to have more sick kids, and there's nobody on the back end, there's no safety net for us, there's a pretend safety net, but it's not real. So how, so I had no idea. I would love to give you ideas, I'm at your disposal. I have, I'm very fortunate to have a deep well of access to national and international figures who work on this at, you know, at very high levels, and I will make them as available to as possible as I have today to help figure out a solution to this that is not, "Parents are wrong, parents are stupid." I want you to really think about some of the statements, and they're painful to hear. Doctors and medical professionals stand up and say, "You know what, I feel for what they believe happened to their children." The American Academy of Pediatrics stood up here and said, "Well, you know, it really makes me feel bad that, you know, that they've gone through this and they believe that this happened to their kids," when they never examined, if you have a broken leg, if I took my kid into the ER, said, "I think his leg is broken," you have to do a basic E-bout, and if you've got the basic signs of a broken leg, you get x-rays. I can take my kid in and say, "His brain's on fire, he's falling apart," and they can look at him and go, you know, and send him home. And the child is dying or asleep, and you've heard here, and the coroner just say, "I'm just not going to investigate it." That's the reality of the, of this black hole of the law that we've fallen into. So the state giving this basic access to a lawyer that will help, sorry, a lawyer that will, however gets compensated, doctors that will just do the basic federal level evaluations on our kids, that, I just, lots of people have lots to say, so. But I would be here, you tell me what you need, I'll get it to you. Anyway, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Seeing no further questions. Thank you very much. Additional testimony in support of this bill? Welcome back.
Hi. My apologies earlier, Representative Bashan, I said that it was in my testimony, you were looking for the VAERS, and I think somebody was looking for the CDC. Vaccines get it online, I said it was purple. My other one was salmon-colored. Okay. All righty. Good evening again, Senator Reiki, Representative Gattin, and members of the committee. My name is still Elizabeth Charlo, despite the long day. I have submitted testimony to you, and I'm going to divert just slightly from it to make a couple points. And all of what I'm going to say is referenced in here fully. But basically, I, you know, a little over a month ago, the WGME held a public televised forum on vaccines, and I asked Kevin Flannigan, who if you don't know him, he's the medical director of Maine Care Services, he's a seasoned pediatrician, I asked him on camera, and then I asked the same question of Dorian Mills, and whom I hope you all know, and Larry Lozey, who's a seasoned pediatrician in Brunswick, the same question. Basically, in their education, what did they get for education or training on how to screen for pre-existing conditions that are contraindications to vaccination? All three of them basically sidestepped it, and they have no education on how to screen for mitochondrial defects, methylation defects, family histories of autoimmune disease, they all apply this one-size-fits-all vaccine schedule, and it's constantly exploding. I understand, you know, doctors, they have a very short amount of time in which to see patients, and they're human, I'm married to it, I know how flawed they can be. But, but the bottom line is that parents, I want, as a mother, to be able to walk into a pediatrician's office and vaccinate my children and know that they're getting the vaccines that are safe and effective for them and that aren't contraindicated based on their medical conditions. And unfortunately, pediatricians don't have that training, they just, they don't. What LD-1076 would do is help educate pediatricians, pediatricians not just on how to pre-screen for contraindications, but how to identify vaccine injuries after they've occurred. And the fact that that doesn't exist is really a huge disservice to American parents. To put the impetus on parents to seek out a consultation with their doctor before they can opt out of vaccinations, when really the parents are, you know, receiving today, parents know their stuff, I mean, they, they do the research that they have time to do because they don't have 15 million patients to see in one day like the doctors do. And Representative Hymanston, you know, you'd asked some questions earlier that I thought was really interesting because I, my understanding is that you're a medical doctor, and, you know, some of the things that you asked, like about the function of the immune system with the, the natural pathos up here, we know that boosting the immune system is essential to overcoming disease, preventing disease and overcoming disease, you know, like using vitamin C and protusis, I mean, that's in the medical literature going back to 1937. We know that measles can be successfully treated with vitamin A because the World Health Organization, you know, says that it's increased risk of measles in populations that don't have access to adequate vitamin A. You know, these are things that I, as a parent, know, and I'm really kind of shocked that some of these, the doctors up here don't. I know a lot of times, I just?
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't. You can't say things like that, because that's accusing me of something that I didn't really say, and I really didn't. So please put, step back down a little bit.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. I've been here all day listening, and I'm, so excuse me for having a little short fuse on that, but I'm not going to accept that.
My apologies. My point was that doctors have a responsibility, they have the medical training, they should know basic immune function and how to treat these diseases, and how to identify patients that shouldn't get certain procedures. And the legislation that we've been hearing today shifts that burden to parents. Parents have to seek out doctors to be counseled. This isn't a, LD-471 isn't, you know, go have a happy discussion with your doctor. I mean, it specifically says in the law that you, they counsel you according to the CDC guidelines. This isn't a two-way street. They have to give you the information that the CDC puts out that you can access online.
We do, we do need to keep to, because we did do all the testimony on 471 already, but we do need to keep the 476 for a second time. We are, we are out of time on this, but I do want to give you the opportunity to give some final thoughts.
Okay.
So that's my question to you, do you have any final thoughts?
Thank you, Senator Reiki. My final thought's going to be on polio. In the 1950s, parents weren't discussing autism, they weren't discussing autoimmune disease, they weren't discussing juvenile onset diabetes, they were discussing polio. And in 2015, we really need to have a modern-day conversation about polio. All of the cases of polio in the last 35 years in the United States have been from the vaccine. This is referenced in your handouts, the CDC said it. Polio isn't the issue of today. Polio was the issue in the 1950s, and we have a hell of a lot more on our plate now than those parents did in the 1950s. That would be my conclusion.
Any questions?
No.
Seeing no questions, thank you very much. Additional testimony in support?
Mary Holland, very briefly. I support this. The mandate comes from the state of Maine, so it does make some sense the state would recognize the possibility of injuries and have some kind of quality control. You asked about the financial note. I have heard people knowledgeable here in Maine talk about the Fund for Healthy Maine, and that there are some undesignedated funds that were from tobacco. That's a possible source. I think you could do this with a very small number of staff. I think the idea of having an ombudsman about vaccine injury could in fact save Maine some. I think the idea of having an ombudsman about vaccine injury could in fact save Maine some money, right? Because the federal government does have an injury compensation program. You heard lots of people here today, they have no idea it was a vaccine injury, the doctors didn't recognize it, there is a very short window, it's three years, there have been efforts to change that statute of limitations that have been unsuccessful. So if people don't get information that that compensation program exists within three years, they're done, and then it's on your welfare rolls or it's on your Medicaid rolls. It's not something that the feds can pick up. I do think Maine could play a really instrumental role as a unique leader in this field and have better vaccine information statements, potentially require product inserts being given to patients, potentially have broader medical exemptions, and potentially track status of vaccinated and unvaccinated outcomes. So I see this as a really innovative, interesting solution that's neither pro nor con. I think this could be really helpful to parents who are being asked to vaccinate according to what is in fact a very substantial schedule. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Additional testimony in support of this bill?
Mark Blacksoe, I'll be quick to new stuff and highlights. Consumers need protection, the vaccine industry, the manufacturers, the delivery channel, and the regulators who watch over them. If you haven't taken some of that message away from today, I don't, you know, I don't know how you could avoid that. There are two reasons they need protection. One is, there's an industry capture problem of the regulatory environment. The second is, when you have that kind of capture at the federal policy level, you get a systematic distortion of information. You have vaccine promotion, which is the job of the promoters, which systematically overestimates the benefits and hypes the benefits of the vaccines. And then you have those same people managing the safety databases, and they systematically suppress the evidence of the risk. And so when you get that fundamental asymmetry in information, you're gonna get bad policy and you're gonna, and consumers are the ones that suffer, and so that's where we need the correction. On regulatory capture, it's in, it's in my testimony, examples, the CDC director is running Merck vaccines, the NIH director is out at Sanofi Ventus, the former secretary of HHS runs a consulting company that counsels how to get through the FDA. Patterns of conflict of interest emerge, Gardasil is a florid example of that, was patented by NIH, approved by FDA, fast-tracked by CDC, and now if you're injured, your only out, your only recourse is to go through person. So that phenomenon, the institutional corruption at the, you know, at the federal level creates a problem at Maine, and you get biases in the information. So just think about the balance that we're weighing here, infectious disease and the real risk of infectious disease. None of us, I don't think you'll hear any parent here on our side of the issue saying that polio is good, or that meningococcal meningitis isn't dangerous, or that measles encephalitis is not, is not a real problem. The issue you have is that the other side of the argument dismisses vaccine injury as a figment of the parent's imagination, and it's real. And then you have to look, if you had balanced views of the issues on one side and the issues on the other, then you could have a rational policy conversation. But the reality in Maine, it's in the testimony, you have basically zero cases of diphtheria, pertussis, no, not pertussis, diphtheria, polio, measles, rubella, one minor mumps outbreak, only one reported case of tetanus, two cases of HIV vaccine. So we're not, we're not in a deficit. And then we have vaccine adverse event reports, there are over, there are something like 3,000 vaccine events reports in Maine since, over the last 25 years, about, up to about 200 a year, nine deaths, and, and that's using the VAERS system, which if it's a 1% to 10% under reporting rate, you could have 2,000, 20,000 adverse events a year and we wouldn't know. So this is the reason for the legislation is to correct this imbalance of power between the industry on the one hand and the consumers on the other. The industry has gone home, it's after five, the consumers are still here.
Thank you very much. Representative Heimenson?
It's, um, either we have our vaccines made by the private industry, a public-private partnership, or public entities. Isn't that, isn't that our only choice? I'm not sure. So we have a public-private partnership in making, creating our vaccines, and that's played out with public partner, public-private partnership in, in every way that vaccines are made and regulated.
Do you think it's a good thing that Julie Gerberton goes from the director of CDC to running the growth and profitability of the Merck vaccine?
I'm not sure that, I'm not saying that it's good or bad.
That's an example of a private, public-private partnership that's working well?
The other, I'm not saying that that's working well, I'm saying that if it's gonna be produced, those are our three options unless you have another option. Either it's all private enterprise, in which case you'll have even more of the vax that the industry, or it's all a public enterprise.
No, it's actually, it's all in the private sector, it's all manufactured in the public sector, and you have the regulators protecting it. That's the partnership.
How would you, how would you have it done?
I would expose manufacturers to liability, I would, I would give consumers access to a jury, a trial by jury in a court of law. We don't have any of those. In every, I'm a businessman, in every, this is the most extreme industry protection in the world, there's nothing like it, and it's, it's in catastrophic failure. So I would just simply ask free markets, free choice, the, you know, basic liability, you know, exposure. We don't have that today. We have sheltered the industry and protected the manufacturers and the regulators from all these injuries, all these stories. They, they're not accountable, no one is accountable, the consumers are exposed, and the doctors tell them that they're lying, or it's a coincidence, or they made it up. And you talked about justice for the immunocompromised, what about the justice for the, for the vaccine-injured child? The immunocompromised child at least knows in advance that they have risk, they know that they can take remedial action, they have information, it's, it's a difficult situation, I have total compassion for them, but a vaccine-injured child, they don't know, they don't know that they're sus-